Everybody, thank you for attending this August 26 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Interstate 35 Board of Directors. We'll go ahead and get started. We'll do a call to order. Nathan Gibson here.
Jessica Buckland here.
Melissa Keller here.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
All right, review of the I-35 mission statement and district priorities. The mission statement, the Interstate 35 Community School District exists to develop lifelong learners and responsible, productive, successful citizens in an ever-changing society. Our district priorities are to articulate and support cohesive student center pre-K through 12 vision for continuous school improvement, engage in effective teaching and relevant learning for the 21st century, and operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness. With that, we'll go ahead and move to discuss or approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
I will second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have open forum. Residents, students, parents, and guardians and staff members of the district may address the board about relevant topics. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker's participation is limited to five minutes per meeting. We ask the speakers to remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employee, students, or their performance. And today, we have one sign up for open forum. Michael McClellan.
All right. Thank you, guys. Glad to be here in the AC unlike most of the day. I just want to talk you guys through today. So, we had 18-minute class periods today, which not very productive, not much you can do, right? So, I ask, or would ask, that we consider going forward having something planned for when we do have days that are extremely hot like this, or when we're having to get out early because it's snowing, or we don't have school because it's snowing. Instead of adding days on at the end of the year, having a plan for these days so we're not sitting still in a classroom for 18 minutes with no productiveness and instead actually being able to learn still. And that's it, so.
So, just to confirm, you're talking about, sorry, I wanted to ask a question, make sure I understand, having it planned in so, so we just don't have school for the day when it's hot, bake in, like we do snow days, bake in, heat days essentially? Is that the recommendation?
So, instead of getting out of school, so during, during COVID, we had the opportunity for online learning while we were either gone for quarantine, or if we had chosen that, and maybe bringing it back to like a, we have the option to do online those days so that we're not all, like, we have some families who drive down from Des Moines to come sit here for four hours and do nothing productive for their learning. So, maybe doing something like an online learning model for those days if we can delegate it soon enough.
Okay. Thank you. I understand. That's interesting. Something to talk with the admin staff about potentially. Okay. Thank you, Michael. All right, there is no other speaker for open forum, so we'll move on with the agenda. We have the students representative report, but I don't think we're starting that yet, maybe next month, well, September. Okay. The principals reports, Ms. Woods and Mr. Beckel, those were online, so thank you. I don't know if we're going to, if you guys had specific things you wanted to talk with us about and definitely come up, but I think we were gonna change it up a little bit so they didn't have to read their entire report, if you confirm. Okay. Mr. Beckel. Okay. So, thank you for taking the time. I did, I did read both of those. I, I don't have any particular questions, any members of the board? Okay. With that, we'll move on to the-
I don't have any questions, sorry. But I just wanted to say, thank you so much for the detail. There was a lot of time, I think, and effort that was put into both of the newsletters and all the emails, so just thank you very much. It's very, very informative. It was easy to follow and just really appreciate that. I love the picture at the top with everyone. I mean, that just gives it just a real good feeling that we're together and just a big group, so it's really cool to see that. So, thank you for all the time you guys put into that.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent report. We have the facilities update. And Mr. Arbrite's here with ECI.
Lot quicker today than before, so. Yeah. Hey, guys. So, yeah, facilities update, so the science lab, we turned that one over to you guys on time. Had a couple of days of classes in there, so we had a handful of punchless items we're tracking down that we should have an update on here at the end of this week. We'll let you guys know, but none impacting the use of the space, so that one, that turnover went pretty well. Fields, I just shared some updated photos with Chad in Brayton, and we're moving along pretty well out there. What you'll see coming up here, maybe some backstops going up over the next four weeks. We'll get some roofs on the dugouts and the concession stand too, so, and almost finished out the concrete. We got a lot of sidewalks being poured this week and next, so come along very well. We're really happy with how the sod and seed has come along. Couldn't have asked for a better summer to put down new seed in. So, I did share with Chad a couple of cha, two change orders for the science lab as a result of the AC, and then some deteriorated wiring we found as we were putting things back together. So, if you have questions on that, I can take those. Otherwise, contingency-wise, we're sitting pretty good on this project, and schedule-wise for the fields, we feel very comfortable where we're at.
Do you, do you have an update on the lighting for the fields?
Lighting for the field? Yeah, so we've been working with the contractor. They delayed delivery of the, call it, the field lighting, Musco lighting. We were supposed to get it mid-August, which worked out well with our schedule. They pushed it to mid-October. We have since been able to get them to commit to the bases that go in the ground for those early September, and we have essentially put them on notice that we need to have everything else wrapped up by middle of September so we can finish up with our seeding around the site. If we can't get that done, then it's, it's kind of on them to come back and fix things up. But we're having good conversations. We got the bases going, so like I said, we get those in, get everything roughed in, and then it's just coming through with a little crane truck, if you will, to set the poles, so I'll give you, probably have an update on that. I think we got an owners' meeting next week, or is it this Wednesday? So, hope to have something then, but that's the most up-to-date info on that one. Yep.
And it just reminded me, I did have a question, so I'm not a, I'm not a construction guy, I don't understand stuff, but I went back there and took a look at stuff, and it looked really good and amazing. One of the things I noticed over by like the batting cage area, the, the ground kind of came to a swole down at the bottom. Does that get fixed later on? Is that something you guys look at before everything's done, saying, hey, you know, a river's gonna pool there and they gotta fix it?
I'm not sure what batting cage, it was, was it baseball or softball?
It was on the right-hand side by the football field, or the practice field area.
Yeah, and there could be some, we, we still have fine grading to do.
Okay.
So, there's some natural spots to drain the water to, like, right in the middle, in between both fields, there'll be a spot with an intake. If it didn't have an intake structure that you could see there, then yeah, we've got some fine grading to do that will shed that all away, so that'll happen into September.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I saw some pictures, so thank you for sending those. Those are great. Is there any chance that we could post that on social media somehow, just showing the public, you know, here's what's going on and-
Done.
Here's what's done?
We already did it.
You did?
Yeah.
You're awesome. You're awesome. Okay, thank you.
It's out there, and they look good. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I, I had a question for you, Mr. Grandin, so I don't, I can, I can combine these things sometimes. I think facilities update, it's broader, and sometimes it's specific to this. But a while back, we had conversations about roof leaking and things like that. I know we were working on the air conditioning, but have we looked into the, the roof leak over our cafeteria area? And do you know anything about that? And if you, if I'm putting you on the spot, that's fine, we can talk about it. I just, okay, all right. Any other questions on the facilities? Okay. All right. Next, we have the July work session reflection. I think April was gonna talk us through that, or I can.
I just thought we'd talk about, just kind of quickly, what our takeaways were from that meeting.
Sounds good. I guess I'll, I'll start. I think the, the first thing that I found, you know, informative was, was Luanne from ISB and her knowledge and how she, you know, kind of walked us through the role of governments and the, the role of a board, and then in particular, you know, took us through as a group, what are some of the, the goals and objectives that we would like to see, you know, the, the district be at two years from now or four years from now? And I thought that was a very worthwhile exercise, as we all went through that and posted our different, you know, sticky notes up on the board, and then heat mapped those and, and pulled them together. I think that was a, a good first step for me, and I said this in the meeting, we talked about it, understanding what are the next, you know, drilled-down levels to understand what actions and activities or policy updates or whatever's gonna, you know, be made in, in order to start getting us headed in, in, in that direction. So, I think we have some follow-up, you know, working sessions with, with ourselves and Chad, as well as potentially the administration, to understand what those, those things are. So, I'm excited. I think it was the first step of many. I do want to bring Luanne back for some more sessions in the future, if nothing more, for me to continue to learn myself, so.
Yeah, I would agree. That's the second work session that I've been through since being on the board, and I think it was valuable in many ways, you know, number one, having a new superintendent there, also having some administrators there and staff just hearing, you know, what this board is looking at and what's important to each one of us individually, I think, is, is really important to share. You know, we have, we have them build out their goals, and so it's good for us to do the same thing, you know, accountability. So, I think it's also positive that the public can see what's important to us, and I think putting some steps behind that and the strategic plan with the goals, that, that's the next step, is just really outlining that. How are we gonna communicate that? I think that's really important, because I think the public needs to, you know, hear that and see, okay, what's, what's on us, what's on, you know, what's on everyone, how are we a part of it, just the overall picture? So, I thought it was a very well, it was well-attended, and I think it was just a lot of good dialogue, so I'm excited to, to see where it goes from here. And I think having it as a standing agenda item, you know, just talking, and I don't know what that looks like, but talking about it at every meeting. I did see some items in the, the newsletter that really ties around, you know, our new mission and just some of the language that we were already using, so that's, that's encouraging to see, because we have the support, so I appreciate that from our administration, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'd agree. The session went great. Can we share some of the stuff we had in that letter, like for? So, we had talked about like a lot of our, you know, kind of goals we wanted as a board within the next two years with regards to like, for the public, for the staff, things like that, you know, I think everyone agreed, like, you know, transparency, wanting to make sure people feel valued, working together. But the, one of the big one is our discussion results. So, to kind of look at, you know, culture of learning, we are really, really up to attend more sessions and kind of learn, I think we all learned when we started, this is not an easy role to be in, and there is a lot that goes with it, and that's why, you know, I would piggyback off what Nathan said, and totally up for more of these work sessions to kind of help us grow, to be a stronger board, to serve the community better, and to have, you know, a better understanding of all the facets that come into a board as a whole. We really want to make sure, you know, we are open for professional development for staff, so hopefully they, you know, reach out with things they may want or ideas, you know, to chatter their admin, so we can assure that that's provided. Just continue to grow on instructional challenges for our students, the rigor, for staff to feel valued and a sense of connection and, and voices being heard, and just kind of, you know, make sure we have lots of representation on our committees, and that way, lots of voices from all areas are being heard, and we can kind of feel like, you know, whole as a community again. But I think it was, it was a really good session, a lot of learning on our side, and to kind of find out that we were all kind of on the same wavelength of the wants for the community as a whole, so that was good to hear anyway.
You guys did a good job describing everything that went well in the session. I mean, I think it was great to have that collaborative session, getting everybody together, especially with Mr. Grandin coming on and seeing how he, what he views the district and where he's wanting to see the growth and everything, so, yes, just reiterate everything you guys said.
Thank you, and, and thank you for each of you for taking the time to be there. Found it valuable. April and Chad, I think if I remember some of the, the next steps where you guys were gonna go and, and kind of outline, we had too many action items, I think, or whatever those things were, and you were gonna go and work with admin team to distill those and then bring the board back together, potentially another working session for us to refine those, so we'll, we'll keep things moving on it.
Yeah, and so, page two talks about kind of those recommendations, right? So, administrative team's already started that work on, on those board, those goals and those action steps, so in September, those, those will come to the board, and then I think after that, then we can go to a work set, work session, and we can dig deeper into that on, on, on the roles and responsibilities for everybody and how we push and continue to move our district forward that way, from, from teachers to admin to board to everybody across the line, so just so that everybody's on the same page, we can keep moving forward.
It's great to hear. Thank you.
And the annual convention is in November, the 20th through 22nd, so I'll send another reminder out about that, and then just respond to me, and I can get you signed up.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion on that? Okay. Next on the agenda, we have discuss or approve the consent items, the past meeting minutes, which are in your board packets on the, the new assembly site. Is everyone easy, able to access that? I guess I didn't ask. I, I really like that. Thank you, by the way, for, for getting that into place, so, yeah. And then the monthly bills and finance, so this is the update, that's diff, just the diff between what was posted.
Yes, the bills, the listing of bills that was in addition to that, so since Thursday, I think, is when we got that, the original listing, and then the listing you've got in front of you has anything additional that was added to it.
And then we have the resignations and contracts, new hires, Amber Jones, associate, Stephanie Raminga, and correct me if I say these names wrong, I want to learn them the right way, high school assistant volleyball coach, Nicole Faith, co-head football cheer coach sponsor, Shandara Beener, co-head football cheer coach sponsor, Amber Plaguehorn, daycare associate, Angela Miller, middle school head volleyball coach. Then we have some contract modifications, Bev, Bev Murphy for mentor teacher, Heather Duttry for mentor teacher, Gidget Showers for mentor teacher, Allison Reichart for mentor teacher, resignations, Heather Wells, drama director, Cheyenne Jones, daycare associate, Jesse Thomas custodian, and Stephanie Raminga for middle school, high school volleyball, I'm sorry, middle school head volleyball coach. And then we had the open enrollment. Before we, discussion on the open enrollment, did you have anything, any recommendations or anything on that one?
Approve as presented, and there's, there is one denial filing.
Okay. So, okay, gotcha. Approve as presented in the open enrollment on the thing. Okay, all right.
Consent.
Yep. So, with that, is there any discussion on the approved consent items? Okay, seeing no discussions, I'll entertain a motion for the discuss and approve consent items.
I would make a motion to approve the consent items.
I'll make a motion to second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Next, we have the action agenda. These are all individual approvals? Okay, that's all I want to make sure. So, next, we have the approval of the student teaching and clinical experience agreements. Approve the agreements with William Penn University and Iowa State University for student teaching and clinical experience. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion on the approval of student teaching and clinical experience agreements.
I'll make a motion to approve the student teaching and clinical experience agreements.
It's been properly moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Next up, we have the hot seat power washer replacement. I believe you all have information in front of you concerning that. This has been interesting background. I don't know if the board knows, but just for the general public, give some information. You want me to try and tell this, or do you want to try and tell this? I'll try and, we'll see how good my memory is.
Bobby is here.
Oh, Bobby's here.
She might be the best one to come up and share with us the information.
Yeah. Short story is, sounds like we burned up two of them, and she has a way better idea, so.
So, on the two old hot seats that we've had, the coils get sooted, and they have a tendency to burn if you don't pay attention. We had one at the old shed that caught on fire on us. We was actually there when it happened. We got it shut down. This last one that we've had, we've had them both for about 10 years. This one was left smoking. Nobody notified me. I was gone, I had left for the day. Bus drivers come in to run baseball and softball, noticed it was smoking. I went out to the bus shed, and it was completely on fire. We ended up having to call the fire department, so on and so forth. It is not a self-contained unit. This new one that I'm looking at has automatic shut-off on it. If you leave it not running for a minute, it shuts its shut-off off until you pick the wand back up and start to use it again. After 15 minutes, it completely shuts down, so then you have to recycle everything again to get it to operate. It's a cleaner fuel. We've got 6,000 gallons of propane out there. We're gonna use propane in it. To me, it makes sense. We won't have to worry about the system suiting up from the diesel, using the clean fuel. There is a fuel savings, and you guys all have that in front of you as well. But it is a substantial bit more money, but it's a stationary unit, it's not a mobile unit anymore. It won't get moved around, beat around. It'll be stationary, one spot, everything piped into it, water, propane, vented properly.
So, as I understand it, we have insurance money that's coming in-
Yes.
-from the last one, though.
Yes.
So, this is an opportunity, even though it's more money-
Correct.
-it's being offset in part by the insurance that's coming in.
Correct.
And you are recommending the M943 propane one here?
That is correct.
Okay. The other questions or discussion from the board?
Is that the one that's the 21?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the, if we were to buy the same machine that we already have, it's, it's $10,000, and those dials aren't contained. Drivers or anybody, whoever comes out and uses it, can turn the dials up, turn them down, forget to shut the burners off. This will help with that, leaving the burners on. That's where a lot of the problem stems from.
Right, so you said the, these last ones that had issues, you had about 10 years?
Yes.
What's about, you think the life expectancy then for this one, or for the one that's stationary?
I'm hoping to get 15, if not more, out of it.
Okay.
It's 21, and we're getting, what, eight, nine thousand from, from insurance?
Yep.
So, it basically brings it down to the cost of-
Of a new-
-of a new one.
Correct.
You're just getting an upgraded model that's safer.
That is correct.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
You'll also-
Oh.
You'll also have the cost of installing the-
Oh, yep. The cost of install, I believe, was 2,400.
For propane. Yeah, 2,600.
2,600, yep.
Close enough, yep.
And that's to run the piping over to the unit and-
Is there any other discussion? So, help, help us understand the motion on this, April, since there's multiple options on the table and the costs associated. If a board member would so choose to, to motion to approve, let's say, they wanted to approve everything Bobby's recommending, what would that motion be?
Then you would motion for the $21,000, yep, the hot seat machine, knowing that there's that additional 2,600 for the piping so that it can be installed.
So, something like, say, what, that number?
Or the machine.
The machine, so?
The M943P.
Okay, so approve the purchase of the M943P with installation cost not to exceed 3,000? Seeing no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve the purchase of the, the M943P with the added cost of installation?
Not to exceed 3,000.
What?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed $3,000.
It's been properly motioned to approve the purchase of the M943P with installation cost not to exceed $3,000. Do I have a second?
I will second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye. Aye. Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have approval of the curriculum purchase, approval of Spire curriculum for As I understand, we own this already, we just didn't have enough licenses to license all of our special education instructors or curriculum, so is there any discussion from the board on this one? All right, seeing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I will motion to approve the Spire curriculum.
It's been properly moved, or motioned. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Next, we have the approval of the door repair and installation, approval of door invoices for $6,065, and another for $17,934. I did have some questions on this one, so what, so this, 17,000, if I'm reading this correctly, is our exterior doors, and which are relatively new? What was wrong with them that we?
So, there was some work done on those exterior, exterior doors to make it so that the CCTV stuff would work, the electronic components, and that was all part of the, it had started, and we had done the work prior to getting approval from the safety grant, the 50,000 per building, and that work can't be included in that. You had to get approval first before you could get any of the work done, but it, it's all part of that inspection that we had, that that work needed to be done for the, for safety.
So, is it like automatic doors, or, I mean, you said CCTV, I feel like that's, like, looking like videos on the doors, or is it?
I think it's just some of the electronic components, so whether there's an actual camera at the door or not, but making sure that it's locking and we're aware of when those doors are open and not closed. Does that make sense?
Ish.
Sort of.
And obviously, so this, this work's already done, and somebody's looking to get paid.
Yeah.
Okay. So, if I understand right, there's supposed to be a safety grant, federal or state, we didn't apply for it beforehand, we did the work assuming that we would get the money, and now we're not getting the money.
We did receive the grant, you just can't pay anything that was our- We did receive the grant, you just can't pay anything that was already done. It can't be for anything past.
Oh, okay.
It was only moving forward from approval, which was a little confusing when they first put that out.
Okay.
So, so part of the safety grant, they come in, a company comes in, does an audit of, of your entire district. And when they come in and do the audit, my assumption is, this was part of that audit, so the district just said, let's get the work going. But you can't actually do the work until you apply for that. So, I think that cart just got ahead of the horse a little bit, and, and the work started before the, the grant money was, was able to be applied for. So, the work needed to be done, and it was going to be done, but ultimately, we just have to come back and ask for your approval to, to pay for it a, a different way until the money gets in, so.
So, then, we'll get the safety grant money in, but we, what do we use that for, then, since we can't use it as back payment, or how does that work?
There were still two festivals, I don't know if I said those, that right? Yeah. That the second door needed the button or the camera, and so, we're working on getting more of that CT, CCTV equipment
Okay.
To get more of that.
I know what this is. It, it's the, I'm assuming it's the outdoor camera, so when you push the button, so elementary has it on the outdoor, you can push the button. High school doesn't, so, when, it's on the inside of the door, so, when you show up and the doors are locked, and you see Tiffany and Deanne sitting in there, there's nothing you can do but sit there and, and wave. So, the CCTV camera stuff is the stuff, I'm assuming, on the outside, so, we put it on the outside at elementary. We might be looking potentially with the funds coming forward to get it on the outside on, on the high school.
I believe so, and so it's all three.
I won't hold you to it, but, but
All three entryways are getting some work done on them
Yeah.
To try to use that fifty thousand dollars from the safety grant.
Okay.
Do you think we could, it's been a while since we've seen the safety audit, and I know we talked about it at one time, but do you think maybe we could talk about that again, just to see, are we on track? What have we, what have we done, just an overview, I think that would be helpful for the public to hear as well, and the staff to hear.
Nope, no, can the safety audit be public, or is that a closed session, because it could have potential vulnerabilities and stuff in it? I don't know. It was an open session? It was closed? Okay, well, you can investigate that, let us know.
We had somebody come in and go over the audit at a high level, and Sharon went through that a little bit. As far as like what the, what the protocol is in the classroom, some of that is private, yes. But I think just looking at the overall audit, just recapping, okay, what have we done, like, what's been checked off?
Yeah, so we can go over components of it, but it's a vulnerability study, right? So, we don't want to go into details publicly until we can rectify some of those, some of those things, but we can certainly do an, an overall picture, review that, yeah.
Okay, so just to recap that one, we've got basically twenty-four thousand-ish dollars to approve in invoices for works that was already done to improve our safety, mainly because the work started before the grant came in. But we do have plans to use the grant. I'm assuming, April, that twenty-four thousand isn't a huge hit to us, and you're not freaking out because it was unplanned spend for twenty-four thousand that we couldn't account for?
No, and the six thousand dollar bill was just repairs, so then having doors ink come in and giving them a whole list of what to do, and that bill just happened to be over the five thousand, the threshold that we need to get approval for. So, that six thousand dollar one is really just other repairs, whether it was something that needed to be rekeyed, or just the store wasn't latching correctly, having them come in and do the work, and giving them a big list to do while they're here, so that we've just got one service call.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the door ink invoices, both.
Been properly motioned, do I have a second?
I will second.
Been properly motioned and seconded, all those in favor, signified by aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have approval of the practice field irrigation heads, and if I was reading correctly, this gets paid for out of the activities fund, I guess?
Yeah, Brayton's got donations for the majority of this, but with the cost of, again, being over that five thousand dollars, we still needed to get board approval since it is going through the district.
Is there any discussion on the practice field irrigation heads? Seeing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the practice field irrigation heads.
Been properly moved, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Been properly moved and seconded, all those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have approval of additional fencing at the baseball complex. Briefly speak to this, for board members may not be aware, we have fencing around the main, I guess, field that, that, at play, but there's no fencing that, you know, kind of, it was taken out in order for a costing measure, something in the past, to basically fence in the complex, to force people to pay to, to come in. So, essentially, somebody can just walk into the, to the field, so, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Mr. Grant, and this is to approve, and we've got two bids on this, and, and do you have a recommendation on which one we go forward with?
We'd recommend the Clanton Creek fence quote, and actually, that quote, correct me, Brayton, I think that quote will actually be a little less than that, because we'll have D D V I finish out as much fencing as possible, and then that would drop that, that quote down some as well, so. Do you have anything to add, Brayton?
No.
Okay.
Is there any discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain, oh, go ahead.
So, this would actually be outside of the project, so, we'd let the project get done, finished up, and then they would come in after the project is done, and come in and do the work after that, so, just, so we're clear, and it would come out of contingency.
Which the contingency is sitting in a pretty good spot, so, already approved, so, okay. All right, there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Clanton Creek fencing quote.
Is it properly motioned, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Been properly motioned and seconded, all those in favor, signified by aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Next, we have approval of change orders one and two to the science lab. We're approving change order one for the AC auxiliary work for nine thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars, and a change order zero zero two for the exhaust fan rewiring. I think Garrett talked about this a little bit earlier when he gave us his update. Is there a discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion for the change orders.
I'll make a motion to approve the change orders.
Been properly motioned to approve the change orders, we have a second?
I will second.
Been properly moved and seconded, all those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Next, we have the board policy updates, you guys should have seen those, if you remember correctly, we do three readings here, so this will be the first reading of these board policy updates. The, sorry, my computer is not responding, and it's not on my list here. So, these, Chad, I don't know if you want to talk about it, but they're direct response to some laws that, that change pertaining to truancy and mandatory attendance.
Yeah, so we just have, based on Senate File two four three five, we just have some changes to our policies that we, that we need to make. So, big changes regarding truancy and attendance, so, moving forward, if a, if a child is absent, and the big change is going to be, pretty much any absence is considered unexcused now. There are a few exemptions, but they are, they are very few. Sorry, I'm looking for my list here. Sorry. There, there's a few exemptions, but pretty much everything is now considered unexcused, an unexcused absence. At eight, eight days a semester, your parent will receive a letter from the district, and then, at twelve days, a parent will be required to come in and have a meeting with administrative, the administrative team, and to come up with a plan, and at seventeen days per semester, they'll be, things will be turned over to the county attorney. So, I met with Madison, Madison County Attorney this, this summer, and they've dedicated more time and effort into truancy to try and help put a stop to student absences. Student absenteeism is going to be weighted pretty heavily on our Iowa School Report card, so this is something that we're going to continue to tackle and continue to help support. So, there'll be some big changes for families, that communication will go out, so that families are aware of, of the changes, and, and the big thing is always, you know, make sure we're communicating with, with the offices to make sure that we can help support that way, and, and ultimately, kids need to be in school, right? So, the policies just reflect the changes to the Senate file to match what, what those, that Iowa code is, has altered to, so.
When we go through and approve the third reading, I should know this, but when will we update the handbook to match that? Will it be directly after? Because I don't know that we can wait till the end of the school year to update it.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we went in an updated handbook already.
Oh, okay.
So, we can go in and update handbook, and, and that's part of our communication that'll go out, those things can all be updated, because ultimately, we always default to Iowa code, right? So, even though our policy, we're working through those draft readings, and if we have a special board meeting or whatever, we're going to throw those in there to try and get that, get our board policy updated, but ultimately, we can, we can default to that Iowa code, and make, that's what we have to lean on, it's Senate file, right? But our student handbooks, we can update and make sure we're following that, we're going to follow that code, so, and that's part of that communication.
Yeah, that's wonderful, because that's exactly where I direct parents all the time, go to the handbook.
Yep, and we had lots of discussion on that, so.
Is there any further discussion on the board policy updates? And in particular, it's five oh one oh three compulsory attendance, five oh one oh nine chronic absenteeism and truancy, and then five oh one oh nine R one, chronic absenteeism and, and truancy. Lot of policies for a single topic, but No, you can just motion, if, if you, if you wanted to approve it, you just motion to approve the board policy update. Oh, yeah, Chad's got some exemptions, just so people are aware.
Sorry, I found the exemptions. So, exemption graduated, so they completed the requirements, court ordered, excused for sufficient reason by any court, religious, attending religious services or receiving religious instructions. Medical, they're unable to attend school due to legitimate medical reasons. Individualized education program, so their I E P affects their attendance, or section five oh four, their section five oh four under the Federal Rehabilitation Act affects their attendance. So, those are the only excused absences. The difficult one is medical, how does, you know, how do we determine whether that medical leave is a legitimate medical reason, you know, that, that type of conversation? So, that's, that's the difficult conversation to have.
Is that a policy update that we'll have to make to define, to define what constitutes a valid medical?
We've been, we've received no guidance on creating a policy for that, but that's something we can talk about, yeah.
Interesting. What, and I apologize, what, it sounds like the way things were in the past, what, what did we allow as excuses in the past that are no longer excuses now?
Well, I can't speak for I thirty-five, do you guys want to kind of weigh in on that?
It's fine, I just, it's just a general that seems logical to me, what you read, and what I always thought it was, but
Well, I think maybe college visits?
Oh, stuff like that.
There you go.
So, just to recap, since Miss Woods wasn't at, at a phone, the, or at a mic, the, the county attorney potentially wants to be at that, that middle ground meeting, so, so they can get in front of it, because by the time they get to the county attorney, they're going immediately to, to court. Also, the other keynote I picked up is the family vacations, two weeks off, you know, and taking your kids somewhere, that's, that's not going to count, you could potentially be getting yourself in, into jeopardy with the truancy stuff. The medical thing, I think, is interesting, because it says a valid medical, and I would think a doctor's note would constitute a valid, if anything, a doctor's note would constitute a valid medical reason, but we, we probably should have some sort of policy or some sort of something in the, the handbooks, because I, I, for one, would not want to, if, if a parent had a doctor's note, and we called that an unexcused absence, I, I don't think that's, yeah, that would not go over well. Let's, let's plan on double-clicking on that the next board meeting, because
Sorry.
I'm sure we'll get some feedback.
Says, says medical appointment is considered absent. I think, I think the, the challenge is when it's extended, right?
Absent or unexcused absence?
Unexcused.
It does say unexcused for a medical appointment? It, it's fine, we, we'll give you some time to double-click on it, and let's just bring it back up in the next board meeting.
The challenge is when it gets, when it, when it gets extended, right? So, you know, if you're home
Yeah.
For two weeks with strep throat, for instance, or, you know what I mean, so
Yeah, how can we count that as unexcused? I don't want people be battling with the, the government and the law because their kid was valid sick. It wasn't two years ago where they were telling the kids not, well, I'm not going to go down that path, anyways.
So, and that's for being gone all day? It's not like if they are coming in late because they had an appointment, or, I'm thinking like my niece has to do physical therapy right now medically for her leg, and she may be a little late in the beginning, is that chalking up against her, or is it if she's gone for the entirety of the day?
So, that'll be a component of it, right? So, if she's gone for two periods, that won't count for a full day, it'll just be for the two periods, but when it equals a full day, then you start looking at, okay, you have eight days, eight full days of absent in a semester.
And do we still have the policy, like, if you're in at ten o'clock, I don't know, it's like a big chunk of the day, you're considered gone, then? Like, is that something we need to look at in our policy to reword, then? Okay, so are we able to look at that policy then?
So, I think, I think we're walking a fine line, so, I think the best option is, why don't you guys just send me your questions, and then administratively, we can walk through that and answer those questions that way. I just don't want to get too deep into the weeds tonight, just to be careful, so, tonight is just the, the, just the first reading of the, of the policies, does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense, but the challenge is, I'm about to vote to approve on the policies when I don't know that I'm going to vote to approve parents being punished for their kids having strep throat. The challenge is, I'm about to vote to approve on the policies when I don't know that I'm gonna vote to approve parents being punished for their kids having strep throat. So that, we just need to follow up and double click on that. My, I, I- Yeah, time to go through it, okay, perfect. Alright, is there any further discussion on that lively topic? Alright, with that, I'll entertain a motion on the first of three readings for the updated board policies.
I will approve the first reading of policy five oh one oh three, five oh one oh nine, and five oh one oh nine dash R one.
It's been properly motioned to approve the five oh one?
It's just informational only. There's no motion on the first and second readings, just the third.
Oh, there is no action.
When you actually adopt it.
You're right, there is no action. Excuse me, I take that back.
Well, thank you for that, yeah.
You're good.
And also note for the general public, the reason we have three readings is so they can be informed and they can communicate back their concerns to the administration and, and leadership. That's the whole point of this, so I would encourage those that have questions or feedback to send them to Mr. Grandin, so. Thank you. Alright, so with that, our upcoming next board meeting is September sixteenth. That's a date change due to the holiday or, and other travel schedules, so. Yep, so our next board meeting will be September sixteenth. If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Been properly motioned to adjourn, do I have a second?
I will second it.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.